All right, it is six o'clock. We call this regularly scheduled meeting for our town council to order. Happy post Thanksgiving. I'm sure everyone's filled with turkey and we'll try to keep everyone awake during the meeting. I'm just really talking about myself right now, but are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we will deem the agenda as approved and go down to announcements. Any announcements from members of council? I'm always looking at Council Thorburn.
A few for the museum you worship. October the 19th, 2:00 p.m., cards to the troops. Join the museum staff in making cards for our military troops serving overseas. Bring a group of your friends. Make as many cards as you'd like and send them out to friends and family and let them know that you're thinking of them. October the 26th, 2:00 p.m., Idis Heritage Tea Party. This is an ongoing thing. It'll limit to 40 seats, so purchase a ticket in advance. And October the 30th, 1 to 3 drop-in. Time to get cozy, prepare your garden for winter. Join staff in helping nature heal, get the museum gardens, as they show the visitors how to prepare their perennial garden for winter.
Thank you. Council Graves?
So I have two announcements. One is a United Way Salvation Army partnership called Coats for Kids, Teens and Adults, too. We collect gently used coats and we push those coats out to folks that would struggle financially to purchase one. So if you need a coat, simply go down to the Bridgewater Mall, we're in the old present jeweler's location, and help yourself to a coat. The other one is Bikes for Kids, Teens and Adults, too. We're collecting bikes at the center corner of the Bridgewater Mall. We accept gently used bikes. They're refurbished in the winter and give them to kids and their parents that can't afford a bike in the spring, so we would appreciate the support. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other announcements from members of council? I guess I'll take this opportunity to just talk about my week last week. I had the honor and the privilege of representing the town of Bridgewater at the C40's conference in Copenhagen. C40, which, I don't know, they can't still figure out what the 40 is, because it's 94 of the largest cities in the world. This group represents over 750 million people and comprised of one quarter of the globe's GDP. So these are cities like New York, LA, Shanghai, Beijing, London, Bridgewater. So the goal of this group is literally to save the planet. Their focus is climate change. Speakers at the conference were Al Gore, the Secretary General of the United Nations, Andrea Ocasio-Cortez, otherwise known as AOC, who is a Congresswoman in the United States, and Michael Bloomberg was there as well. And I'm going to talk about this over in the next few meetings, because it's just a lot to unpack in this. The common theme that I took away from that is that national governments on a global scale will not be the ones leading the climate change, saving the planet from climate change. There's too much breakdown in left and right and red and blue, and there's just too much partisan politics involved. No G7 nation that signed the Paris Accord will actually ever meet those targets. That was the takeaway, which was a little disheartening, because that's us. And it was the UN Secretary General who said, "National climate plans fall short and will still lead to a catastrophic three-degree temperature rise, but it will be local government, cities and towns that lead the way and keep us at that 1.5 degree level." So it's quite empowering for us as a community to know that we can still have an impact. And the big takeaway, so those who recall, 10 years ago, we had David Miller here. He was the former mayor of Toronto. He is now the Director of International Relations for the C40. And he publicly declared that Bridgewater's energy poverty reduction strategy will be used by global mayors as a best practice template, which I think says a lot about our plan and about our community. So the reason I say that is when people ask, "Why would you bother doing all this work when your carbon footprint in the town of Bridgewater is almost not measurable on a global scale?", it's because that plan is now in the hands of cities representing 750 million people. And if they can use that to reduce their carbon footprint, then it's not insignificant what we do here. It has a huge impact. And what we are talking about is our very survival, especially being a coastal community that with one meter sea level rise, we lose, you know, La Havre Street or the mall, a lot of infrastructure, not to mention all the people that live in residential housing complexes around this province. So that's why we do it. So we continue to not think small. And again, over the next few meetings, I'll talk about all the things that are trying to get out of my head. It was unbelievable. It was very surreal in the middle of Al Gore's keynote speech for him to call out Bridgewater's plan in front of 2,000 delegates. That was really quite something. And again, I think it's a testament to our staff and council's past and present and to the community that's endorsed it and got behind it. And I think it's really encouraging for, especially as we have a gallery filled with youth, to know that their community is doing as much as it can to ensure that there's a future for them. And as the future leaders of our community, hopefully they'll take up that mantle and move it along as well. It was quite something. So I look forward to talking to council more about that. And if anyone has questions, we can talk about that. But let's move on, because I know this is really exciting. We have an exciting presentation to make, so I'm going to turn this over to the deputy mayor, and we'll make the presentation.
All right. It looks like the Bridgewater Bulldogs 15 and Under-A baseball team is here, so come on down, everybody. All at once, yeah. The Bridgewater 15 and Under-A Bulldogs are the 2019 15 and Under-A Tier Two Nova Scotia Provincial Baseball Champions. They hosted the four-team Tier Two Championships the weekend of August 30th through September 1st, and ended up winning with a comeback, six runs, seventh inning over Great Village in the championship final. The plaque that the mayor is presenting says, "2019 15 and Under-A Tier Two Nova Scotia Provincial Baseball Champions." And it lists Cohen Westlake, Elias Dagley, Evan Spencer, Colin Snyder, Seth Smith, Cameron Langill, Charlie Whitty, Cole Jodry, Zach Brewer, Andrew Hat, Logan Helldum, sorry, assistant coaches Reg Brewer, Jeff Langill, Barry Spencer, Neil Snyder, and head coach Daven Nagler. Congratulations. Where does one get one of those fancy sweatshirts?
Yeah, that's awesome. There you go. Congratulations, everybody.
Nice work. Nice work.
I love, I love when we have these presentations. I mean, it seems we have them so often, and it's just, we have great coaching and great youth activities. Yeah, maybe it's why we're growing. Next is delegations. Any delegations? No? Okay. We have meetings from September 23rd, regular council meeting. Any errors or omissions? Hearing none, we'll deem the minutes approved and go down to reports and recommendations. RFP 2019-12 Municipal Energy Utility Service Provision. I'll turn that over to Mrs. McDonald.
All right. So you have before you a request for decision to award RFP 2019-12, the Municipal Energy Utility Service Provision Detailed Operational Study and Implementation Plan to Invigor Policy Consulting. And if you recall, back in February, you received a scoping study on a broad range of traditional and innovative financing mechanisms for our Community Energy Investment Plan and Smart Cities Energy Poverty Reduction Program. And in that, we looked at various architectures and proposed to you that we investigate a few, two different options in more detail. One of those being what a utility is or could be for the work that we're doing and how to capitalize. The cornerstone pieces are community-scale renewable energy systems and neighborhood retrofit programs. And our Smart Cities Challenge work is, or energy poverty reduction work, rather, is really based on the neighborhood retrofit program. So there's significant overlap with the two programs, Community Energy Investment and our Smart Cities, which are both council priorities. So we require an understanding of what utility options might be before we dive into our business planning around how we're going to capitalize the large work that we want to undertake. So they are studying regulatory assessment, business structure assessment, and the financial assessment of utility options. And when I hear utility, I often just think about, you know, transmission lines and that sort of stuff, but it's really, you know, we're talking about possibly generating energy through the community energy, or community-scale renewable energy. So we had proposed in the Smart Cities Challenge, look at solar garden. So we are talking about energy production as well as possibly services. So it's more like efficiency. Nova Scotia is a service-based utility rather than an infrastructure-based utility. So we want to explore what all of those things are before we either close the door on them or open a door. And that's really what this level of study is going to do, is to show, you know, how, what does the landscape look like and what do we need to do to be able to move our projects forward? And whether it's in partnership or on our own, we don't know. Lots of people are asking lots of questions, and that's what this is about, is answering some of those questions that we can't answer right now. This project is funded through Federation of Canadian Municipalities, through the Emsip program, as well as through the Department of Energy and Mines at the provincial level, through the Low Carbon Communities Program. We received a lot of interest. We had 29 requests for the RFP, but only two proposals were submitted. So Invigor is the winner. They, I guess the one we're requesting your award, rather, they demonstrated clear understanding of the work, the local context, they have gathered a highly qualified team together, and they have experience producing studies at this stage of project design. This is really providing us stuff that we can then create our map to go forward. So yeah, that's what you have in front of you.
All right. Questions from members of council? Council Graves?
I just want in regards to the number of packages that went out. 29 went out and only two came back. That's really, really low, isn't it?
No, that is actually quite standard. We've had a lot of interest, but it all depends on, yep, we get lots of people who take them out. And then sometimes they team up, so it might have been six packages were taken out and we get two proposed, you know, it all varies. So, yep, that happened with a number of other RFPs that we award.
Is it because what's happening is so complicated? Like you're ahead of the curve on a lot of stuff?
Yeah, and I think there's a lot of interest, like what is it that they're asking for? And then, oh, this, we don't, we might have only a part of this, and it all varies. What's the timelines? What's the budget? You know, those are the ways people make decisions.
Other questions?
You said that they have experience in doing studies at this level. If you need them to go further in the future, do they also have those capabilities, you believe?
I believe so. Yeah, okay.
Other questions? You want a motion? Yes, please.
I move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recognition of staff and award RFP 2019-12 Municipal Energy Utility Service Provision Detailed Operational Study and Implementation Plan to Invigor Policy Consulting Incorporated for a proposed price of $61,325 plus HST, $62,953.39 net HST.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Further discussion?
Just a, when, once awarded, what's the turnaround time for them to start the project?
Fairly soon. I don't have the proposal here with me, but it's, they're starting soon, and I believe a spring delivery.
Okay.
Yep.
Ready for the question? Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is Energize Bridgewater, update on municipal reporting and indicator systems.
So I've asked Nelson Nolan to join us and to walk you through the systems, and yeah, he'll tell you more about it. It's exciting.
Wonderful.
Okay, so, yeah, as Jessica mentioned, tonight, I'm going to give you a little bit of a recap on some of the reporting systems that we currently participate in, and also how we're looking to promote the participation of these systems. To the community in the future for further engagement. So the main purpose of participating in a range of reporting systems is to follow the progress of different plans that the town has created over the past decade. So our plans revolve around mitigation and adaptation, and more recently, have gone into the realm of economic development and that sort of thing. So all of the different reporting systems that we participate in have some element of tracking our progress related to those plans. And in the future, it'll also help to track the Energy Poverty Reduction Program and some of the core outcomes that we're looking to target for that. So these are the three reporting systems that we've been reporting to since around 2014 for the Partners for Climate Change Protection, 2017 for Quest, and around 2018 for the Carbon Disclosure Project. So some of the reporting systems are purely national and are for cities specifically. Some of them are international and involve cities and companies. And they all provide a really good way for the town to benchmark where we are in relation to a lot of other cities, which is important for Bridgewater, because we're a small municipality, but we're also a leader in a lot of the initiatives that we're pursuing. And they've shown that we're doing quite well, too. So Partners for Climate Change, on a five-milestone scale, we've reached the fourth milestone as a corporate entity, and the third milestone is a community stream. We've got a B score compared to the average of G in the Carbon Disclosure Project. And we're actually the smallest Canadian municipality to report for CDP. And Quest, we haven't gotten our score yet, but based on preliminary scoring, we're doing really well compared to the other five municipalities that are participating as part of the scorecard. So some of the reasons why it's good for the municipality to report through these systems is that it really helps to create a transparent way to engage the community. We can kind of look at the goals that we've set and how far along we've come at reaching them. It also helps to solidify a national and international recognition that we're getting. You know, we're getting these grants, and a lot of reporting systems have an element of tracking, you know, what we're spending money on, and the sort of benefits that come from that, like job creation, that sort of thing. And it also helps to support staff evaluate some of the work that we've done, and it helps council, too, to kind of chart our progress over different periods of time. And so we have all these reporting systems. They produce a lot of information about how we're doing. And we also have a tracking progress tool. And so this tool is part of a project by the International Institute for Sustainable Development, and it's essentially a website that hosts the Awesome Bridgewater Index. It has the capability of incorporating all of our reporting indicators and any indicators that council might deem important for monitoring the progress of the Economic Development Action Plan. And one of its key features is looking at the alignment of the UN Sustainable Development Goals paired with indicators that we choose to monitor. And the town is doing really well at aligning, or the town's existing plans and policies align really well with some of the outcomes and goals that the Sustainable Development Goals seek to achieve. So basically, all the green boxes are points of alignment with a plan or a policy that the town has. And some of the programs that do incredibly well are the Energy Poverty Reduction Program and the Community Energy Investment Plan, because they look at economic development as well as climate change mitigation, and also helping people that might be in poverty. So we can do a little bit of an exploration of the website. It has a lot of functionalities, and we're looking to add to it in the coming months. Right now, it's broken down by looking at downtown revitalization, energy, and quality of life. So I'll just click on downtown revitalization. So it does a really good job sometimes displaying, sounds good, graphs, and that... And so it looks at, over the course of a 10-year time period, essentially, different indicators that could revolve around transportation, job generation, investment into the community, and basic indicators related to quality of life. And it also has an open data component, too, so you can download data in CSV format, which is basically just Excel format. And it gives you a description as well, so kind of X is an educational tool. So it defines what we're measuring, and even some of the limitations of that measurement. And then it looks also at data sources. And, yeah, we're essentially recommending that this be the primary platform that incorporates all of the different indicators that measure a range of town services and programs. And, yeah, so I'll go straight to their recommendation. So we recommend that you adopt the proposed resolution for endorsing Agenda 2030, which is essentially the Sustainable Development Goals, and that you direct staff to utilize the tracking progress tool as the primary platform for measuring our progress over the next period of time. Yeah.
Perfect.
Cool.
Questions from council? Deputy Mayor?
One of the slides says that it hosts the Awesome Bridgewater Index. What does that mean? I understand the terminology, but I don't understand why it would be hosted.
So, I mean, it hosts, I mean, the Awesome Bridgewater Index could be whatever the town wants it to be, so we can put any kind of indicator that we'd like within the Awesome Bridgewater Index. The actual website itself is hosted by IASD, the International Institute for Sustainable Development, and it's part of their community indicator project. And so we are participating community in that, and we were, we've participated kind of since their piloting phase. Right now, they're looking to expand, which means that they're looking to get different nonprofits, companies, and other municipalities to join the platform. Some of the platforms, or some of the indexes are quite evolved, so Winnipeg has a really comprehensive index, which measures a whole range of different aspects of town services and quality of life and that sort of thing. Yeah, and then, so it's really an international platform for, yeah, measuring progress.
Council Graves?
So these indexes are the ones that Canadian communities are using, right? So we're doing the benchmark and comparing it against Canadian cities or like cities?
Yeah, so, I mean, right now, there's only six participating cities in Canada that are using this platform, but IASD's looking to expand. And so a lot of the data comes from Stats Canada, and so it provides, Stats Canada provides a really good benchmark, just because the data collection is broad and consistent. But we can also put our own indicators on the website as well, so any data that we collect locally, which is part of our Smart Cities Challenge Plan. And so, yeah, it can kind of evolve over time, but yeah, you're right, like it acts as a really good comparison between different municipalities in Canada.
And if I could just add to that, one of the commitments of the Economic Action Plan is to create the Awesome Bridgewater Index. And around the time that council endorsed the Economic Action Plan, we were approached by the International Institute of Sustainable Development to see if we would be interested in participating in this pilot index project, the community indicator systems. And it seemed like a really great way for us to leverage some resources and capacity building for us to understand more about performance measurement and developing indices like this, how we would benchmark against other communities, what would we want to put out there, and then to design a functional website without us having to take on the bulk of that work. So council endorsed us at that time, so that was probably about two years ago, to partner in on this project. And then through the Smart Cities Challenge, and part of the commitment with Infrastructure Canada, is we have a large requirement to report on our progress and report on our outcomes versus how many, how we spent the budget. It's what is the impact that that budget is having, and that's part of, so again, sort of bringing all of this together under the Awesome Bridgewater Index, and through this platform, is a way for us to try and pull all this together. Quest, you know, the Partners for Climate Protection, and the CDP, they already have other monitoring platforms as well, so we'll still be present on some of those other reporting platforms that we're a part of. But this will become sort of that way for us to report as a town about the work that we're doing and the progress that we're making, so, yeah. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion?
I'm bringing up the motion.
Yeah, there's two motions, so if you'd be first, please.
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to utilize the International Institute for Sustainable Development's tracking process. Web platform as a primary indicator tool for the town's sustainability reporting and indicator systems, as well as council's Economic Development Action Plan.
Seconded by Council Graves. Any other questions? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Now, there's a resolution after that, and I know, Council Thorburn, you love making resolutions.
This is a long one. You have to give me some time. I would move that, whereas Agenda 2030 and its attended 17 aspirational Sustainable Development Goals, SDGs, adopted by the United Nations on 25th September 2015, will drive global effects to the end poverty and place the planet on sustainable course over the next 15 years. And whereas the SDGs constitute an interlinked framework, fusing together economical, economic, social, and environmental dimensions of sustainability development, including provisions to mobilize the resources required to support implementation, and whereas a 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development is based on the principles agreed upon under UNGA Resolution A/IRVS 68/288, known that the future we want, the outcome of the 2012 Rio Plus 20 Conference adopted in Bruxen in 2012, and whereas the agreement was reached at the 21st Annual Session of the Conference of Prairies of United Nations Framework Convention on Climate Change, UNFCCC in Paris in December 2015, on measures to minimize climate change by reducing greenhouse gas emissions with a view to keeping global warming well below the 2%...2 degrees Celsius and to contain its impacts. And whereas our government, as a member of the United Nations, has committed to this new global agenda on behalf of Canadians, and whereas our government will need to translate the global SDGs into a national and sub-national plan for sustainable development within its own country and province-specific and regional goals and time-bound targets. And whereas attaining the SDG targets will require close collaboration amongst all levels of government, civic, society, and business at local, national, and international scales. And whereas the town of Bridgewater is committed to sustainability, managing our community in a way that balances the social, economic, and environmental implications of our activities in order to meet the needs of the people today without compromising the daily ability of future generations to meet their own needs. And whereas the SDGs are inspirational, aspirational, integrated, and universal nature and represent a significant evolution in global cooperation. Be it resolved, that Council for the town of Bridgewater shall, one, embrace the global consensus of SDGs, is the overarching plan towards the year 2030, under which we will harmonize our own policy, planning, and leverage our efforts towards making the world a better place where we leave no one behind. Two, publicly state the town's commitment to achieve the SDGs. Three, urge Nova Scotian Federation of Municipalities and SFM to adopt a resolution of support for the SDGs. And four, encourage the governments of Canada, First Nations, Nova Scotia, and other local municipalities to support the implementation of national and/or provincial or regional strategies respectively for the SDGs, and to use accessible, verifiable, and transparent indicators that complement the UN indicator framework to track the progress toward achieving of the SDGs.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Graves. You should never have to read another resolution, as long as you sit around this council table. That was a long one. Thank you for that.
No worries. Question?
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. That's important stuff. Actually, I just read today, too, that it's the... Actually, I just read today too that the UN has changed that target from two degrees to one point five degrees. So they said two degrees is now too much, and it will tip us back to the point of no return. So if things are moving quickly.
Can I ask just one quick question?
Yeah.
Will that tool eventually allow us to compare ourselves against other municipalities, like within the tool?
Yeah, so it doesn't have a built-in, like, widget on the website? Sorry, it doesn't, there's no built-in widget yet for that, but that's their intention-
Okay.
-over time. And, yeah, so, yeah, it'll be implemented eventually.
Pastor Thorburn?
Yeah, so with the five municipalities, it's using the system now, right? And we're doing fairly well compared to what they're doing. And as new ones come onboard, they'll be using the same system that's already established?
Yeah, so I guess there's the distinction between the monitoring progress tool and then the other reporting systems that we use. So the monitoring progress tool doesn't really give us a score of any sort, but it aggregates scores from our other reporting participation, or programs that we participate in. And so in those reporting programs, so the CDP score, sorry, Quest Scorecard, and PCP, we're doing quite well compared to other municipalities. And that can be displayed on the ISD tracking progress platform.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much.
Our next item is Lindbergh County Senior Safety Program Report for September of 2019. There for your information, as I think we say every month, it's, I don't know what we'd do without this program, the number of people that are served by it. I'm sure if you doubled it, you still wouldn't be able to help everybody that needs help. This report obviously includes the effects of the hurricane. And I was encouraged to read in the report that Chris found that the community did step up and really helped, but there was some gaps that needed to be filled and things I never thought about, like if you run out of power, if you don't have power, then you can't keep your insulin cold, and it's things like that that- you know, and oxygen, right, Councilor Graves? So things that, for many of us, we just take for granted, we don't think about it. So, again, if you didn't have a program like this, you would maybe not know that. And so at least by knowing it, we can maybe work towards solving that. So that report is there for your information. Are there any questions? Our next item is ten point four, the facade improvement program funding request for seven oh six King Street, two, and five eighty-seven King Street.
Correct.
Yep.
So this, over the summer, we received three applications from two properties, some business owners. Two applications from seven oh six King Street and one from five eighty-seven King Street, seeking funding in the total amount of eleven thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents for public facade improvements. These applications were received by the Downtown Plan Advisory Committee at their meeting on August twentieth. And DEPAK debated and discussed the merits of all three of the applications and then made a recommendation through staff to council that you have before you tonight, that council consider awarding the grants. So for seven oh six King Street, in the package you received, it detailed what the renovations are for each. And you can see that in both cases, those renovations are underway. I don't know if councillors have been past seven oh six King or five eighty-seven, but you can see that the work is already started and looking great, actually. So renovations at five eighty-seven King Street include installation of awning signage and lighting. And that project, it's in compliance with the Land Use Bylaw and with the historic downtown signage. And then the renovations at seven oh six include, for phase one, includes the installation of second-story windows and trim, new entrance door and trim, and a double door on the south public facade. And then for the phase two, the removal of the vinyl cladding and south facade and the vinyl soffit, and installation of cedar shingles in its place. So substantial renovations in both cases.
Any questions about the information in front of you? Councilor McInnes?
I'm on that committee, and I do have some questions tonight, like council to sit down and with the staff to review how we award this. To me, it seems like it can be, can be, I hate to use word rigged to get more, but it can be, in my view. And so I would like to see us sit down and look at how this program, to see how we award funds.
Okay, we can add that to a discussion session to kind of get more information. And, I mean, it should be as simple as possible, but also as clear and transparent as possible. We can add that to the agenda. Councilor Graves, do you have a question?
Yeah, I guess for me, seven oh six, the two projects really, as far as I'm concerned, it's one project just divided into two. And I really don't think that, I think five thousand dollars should be the maximum myself personally. And then five eighty-seven, there is money put aside for signage. And that signage is very specific to the business that's going to occupy that space or that currently occupies that space. And I don't think the taxpayer's money should be going to identify a business. If you were putting on a background that supported a sign, that could be, multiple signs could be put on to support the business, just to support other businesses that come to that space. But this is very specific to that business. And if that business were to close next year, that money would be lost. But if you needed a background to support the signage, then I would support that because multiple signs could be put on that building. I don't think that taxpayer's money should be paying for signs specific to it.
No, that's noted. So again, if we need to start making changes to the policy, then council should open up the policy and make changes. So right now, that, to Councilor Graves' question, that is allowed under the-
That is allowed. Sorry, it wasn't a question. So, yes, it is allowed under the current program, so. But it was changed from before to just, it had to be part of a larger piece, so people can't apply just to replace their sign. It's part of a larger project, and there has to be a larger public improvement. And signage is allowed to be a component of that.
So with roughly, assuming this all gets approved, roughly thirteen thousand left in the fiscal. Do we have any other applications that are in the pipeline or that you may hear rumblings of?
Possibly.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, we're hopeful that we will be able to expend all of the money, but- unclear at this time. We don't have any applications in the queue. They'd be coming forward. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilor Thorburn?
I just agree with Councilor Graves. It's two phases. I think if they want to do something to be done this year and apply for another grant next year to do something else. So I really think maybe phase one should be done before they start applying for phase two. And I'm not sure if you can do one without starting two. But the good news is there's not another request on there that, you take it from somebody that has no money because it's already given to somebody who have two. So, no. Anyway, it is what it is.
So I'll just, I'll circle back to Councilor McInnes. Would like us to kind of revisit, I think we need to revisit the policy. I think it's always wise to do that if you find, whatever the policy is, things are going one way or another way, and tweak it as you go along. You know, that's the beauty of local government, is we're flexible enough to pivot when we need to pivot instead of getting stuck in a rut. So we'll make sure this comes back to a future agenda in order to make sure that we're moving along in the way that we feel most comfortable with.
And I'd like to see us do that prior to us issuing any more grants.
We can add that to a discussion, can we add that to the November discussion session? Well, uh-
Uh, we're full.
December then?
Yeah.
Soon. Soon, I'm here soon.
But it's fair to say that these applications fall within our current guidelines.
They absolutely do.
And that's the important part of it. I disagree with it, but they do fall.
Well, to make that clear, I don't think anyone's saying that what's happening here is not correct. It's that the program needs to be tweaked, so, yeah.
Do you like to have a motion?
Yes, please. Yep.
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater to endorse the recommendation of the Downtown Plan Advisory Committee, DEPAK, and approve grants to improve and beautify public facades of buildings. And the downtown business district is presented in document nineteen dash one-three-two, specifically in response to three application submissions as follows. Seven oh six King Street, phase one, four thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars. Five eighty-seven King Street, two thousand four hundred and six dollars and ninety-five cents. And seven oh six King Street, phase two, five thousand dollars.
Seconded by, seconded, Councilor Fergier. Any further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. And again, we'll add that to an agenda as soon as possible, whenever that may be. Our next item is accounts to be written off, or account to be written off. From time to time, this happens. In this case, this is seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars that's been deemed as uncollectible because it was for a mobile home that was demolished in two thousand and eighteen. So just a difficult, and it does happen from time to time. Is someone prepared to make a motion, Councilor Fergier?
Yes, your worship. Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater. Town Bridgewater Council approve a write-off of the account as contained in document nineteen dash one-three-three totaling seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
Thank you. Seconded by Mayor Tanner. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is monthly permit application report for August and September. Have that there for your information. So the year-to-date number of building permits is up, which is good. Town is constantly abuzz with activity, so that's good. If you have any questions or comments about those, then you can talk to Mr. Hopkins, I believe, and he'll be able to answer those questions for you. Things keep motoring along in the Town of Bridgewater, so that's great. Next item is notice to repeal policy, as I wait for my screen to load, policy fifty, billings for aerated carts. So it took me, I had to look at that, so it's the green carts.
Yes.
So our policy is kind of counter to our-
It's redundant, really. Our bylaw already addresses who's responsible for the carts, which is the property owner. And we have a fees policy that establishes the fee. So this policy establishes the fee that's no longer applicable and just repeats that the property owner is responsible for ensuring there's a cart. So it's not necessary, and the recommendation is that council repeal that.
Perfect. So again, just for the public's benefit, we give notice, and then we kind of deal with this at the next meeting. So it's just notice that's coming up. Someone prepared to make a motion to Mayor Tanner?
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to section forty-eight of the Municipal Government Act that at the October twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen council meeting, repeal of policy fifty, billings for aerated carts will be considered.
Seconded by Councilor McDonald. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Next item is first reading of revised solid waste bylaw, currently chapter one-twenty-seven.
All right. So council approved a new solid waste collection contract, which comes into place April first, two thousand and twenty, and expires March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. And what that contract will see is some service levels changed for the town's solid waste collection services. We've had some improvements to our service level. What this does is it also requires that we look at our solid waste bylaw and make sure that it's consistent with the new service levels that we're establishing, which will be effective April first, two thousand and twenty. So the service levels that will be changing, that have to be reflected in our solid waste collection bylaw, are the bi-weekly bulky waste collection, which will start April first, two thousand and twenty, but we need the bylaw to say that. Annual curbside electronic waste collection. Green card administration, which we don't need the changes in the bylaw for that. Weekly summer organic waste collection, and annual electronic waste collection as well. So the revisions that we've made in the bylaw are to define bulky waste, and that it will be bi-weekly. Provide for an annual fall collection for designated electronic products. We will continue, and it clarifies in the bylaw that we will continue with scrap wood and metal collection in the fall, which is separate from the bulky waste collection. And as I mentioned, we'll provide for that bi-weekly bulky waste collection as well. We don't have to amend it to reflect the frequency of organic waste collection or green card administration. So that's why you don't see any amendments there. The attached bylaw that you have in front of you would have an effective date of April first, two thousand and twenty. And it's being brought forward right now for council to consider so that we have enough time to do communications effectively, so our residents would be aware of the changes that will take first April first, two thousand and twenty, well in advance. And so it's not to confuse them with the fall cleanup that's going on right now and all those things. We give Patrick enough time to do that. And the other municipal units that are partners in the Joint Services Board are also taking their solid waste collection bylaws through the same process, if they haven't done so already. In terms of legal review, the Joint Services Board had this bylaw reviewed by a legal counsel. So we didn't use our legal counsel, we used theirs to do that. And they reviewed all the partners' waste collection bylaws as well. So council's options are to approve the draft revised solid waste bylaw by conducting first reading and giving notice of second reading. Provide a direction for further revisions to the bylaw, and you may decide you want to see some other changes there. And we'd have to do a report to kind of address what the implications of those changes are. Or you could defer your decision until a future date as well. It's also being recommended that in addition to approving this bylaw, that our other bylaw would be repealed. And this would replace it. Okay?
Everybody get that? Questions on that before we jump in, Councilor Graves?
Just a comment, really. This is in regards to the bulky waste collection. So instead of having it twice a year, it's now fifty-two weeks a year, pick-up bulk waste, correct?
It would be every two weeks.
Every two weeks, so twenty-six times a year. Sorry. So tonight, or this week, people in Bridgewater, and then probably around the county, are putting out bulk waste. And there are people that are going through that bulk waste and repurposing it, taking a chair with a wonky leg and tightening up and taking out plastics, storage bins, and reusing those, and reusing a whole bunch of things. So by going weekly, when it's twice a year, it's very efficient for people. They know what's, they know the date, they can go out there with the pickup trucks, and they can pick up perfectly good stuff and just repurpose it. But when you're spreading it over twenty-six weeks, it no longer becomes efficient. And it no longer becomes worth it, so to speak, for people because they don't know when things are coming out. So for me, I can see us putting in far more garbage into landfill, perfectly good garbage, at the expense of people that could really use it or could really make something of it. And I'm just wondering if the other municipal units have had conversations in regards to the bulky waste?
Yeah, we have at the Joint Services Board table, I believe at our last meeting, or the meeting before, that issue was brought up, just the concern over that. Other municipal units have implemented this. And like H or Halifax, what they have done is they have this curbside giveaway thing once or twice a year where residents put the waste out on a designated day, in the morning or the evening before, and then at the end of the day, take back whatever's not taken at the curb by people going through and kind of picking things out. So they did talk about whether or not a program like that would be something that we would want to consider in our municipal units. There was some concern over that, just that residents might not actually bring it back in at the end of the day in some areas. But it's something that Sue, C-Cord, had suggested to the board we give some serious consideration to. So that belief is still on the continuing agenda of the board to look at. Doesn't mean, I think each municipal unit would have to make that decision on their own. But the board may be instrumental in bringing that recommendation forward.
Well, I think if there's anything that the Town of Bridgewater can do to repurpose this material, then I think that we should pull out all stocks and make that happen. I really do. I really-
So there's nothing preventing us, even as a town, from putting into place something like that as we go forward? It can be separate from that, and we can just have, you know?
It could be, you know, four times a year.
Yep.
And special dates and advertise it. I have, that would be fine, or six times a year.
I think we all recognize that, especially in the towns, so really it's us in the whole bay, in this case, that because of the efficient layout of our community, it is easy for people with a pickup truck to go and pick up those things. You're absolutely right. So I think we should look at other ways to repurpose. Not that I want to go off-topic, it's kind of on- Um, not that I want to go off topic, it's kind of on topic. Um, one of the speakers at the conference was Portland, Oregon. And so they now have a program where when a building is being demolished or a certain level of renovations are being done to the exterior of the building, there's a permitting process. And the building inspector goes and looks at what will be removed from the house or the building. And will say, you know, this, this roofing can be repurposed. And part of the permitting is, they have to, instead of dumping in the landfill, lumber, uh, shingles, certain windows, have to go to what they, a special landfill where that can be repurposed by people who can use it. So um, it's, it's kind of different than this, but at the same time, I thought that was quite something. Um, now in that case, they're taking down large buildings, so there's, you know, thousands of pounds of material that can be reused. But even two-by-fours and other timbers that um someone can use it. So it just, just kind of goes together with that. Councilor McGinnis?
Yeah, two comments. So we have in this here contract, an improved level of service at a reduced cost.
That's right.
That, that, that is something that's almost unheard of, so that, that's very good. But I have another concern, almost like uh, construct graves. Uh, the concern I have is our streets will be constantly littered with sulfis and what else have you, throughout the whole year, instead of just two days a year. People put this stuff out early, and you're going to see the stuff on the side of our streets almost constantly.
So there is, there is a time limit at which you can put things out. I had, I had a call from someone the other day, um, the other day, timing up to, a few weeks ago, where someone had put out their bulky waste uh like three weeks early. And so um, uh, the waste inspector came and talked to them and they had to pull it back from the curb. So recognizing that they could technically put it out two weeks early, so if your collection is on a Wednesday and they put it out on a Thursday and it would come back around, but my understanding is that is still not allowed.
That's correct.
Oh, no, I'm sure it's not allowed. The question is, it should be enforced.
It's going to be, yeah, and it's going to be in education. So um, to the CAO's point, we're doing this now so that we have a long time to educate people before it takes place six months from now. But part of that is going to be reminding people, you can't quit out a couch two weeks early. Um, and, and it gives us a chance to figure out how to get that couch into someone else's hands if someone needs it, so. Councilor McDonald?
Just as a, a point to the, this conversation, um, in my neighborhood, there are a number of apartment buildings. And I was speaking to someone about this, and they were very pleased because when people move out of apartment buildings, if they don't have the means to get old furniture to the dump, they can't hold on to it until the next heavy pickup day. And it's going to the end of the dead-end road in, in our neighborhood. Um, so hopefully it will help eliminate some of that dumping because people don't have to wait for two times a year um if they don't have the ability to get to, to the recycling center. And uh, hope, you know, if it can reduce some of that dumping, then, you know, it, it may have a, just a different benefit.
I think our rural partner is, is excited about the, the reduction in illegal dumping that this hopefully will have an impact on. We'll figure out a way to kind of have the best of both worlds, because your point's very, very valid. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor McDonald?
I'd move the town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the intent of the revised solid waste bylaw as per document nineteen dash one-three-six and proceed to a second reading of that, of the bylaw at a council meeting to be held on November twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to section one-six-eight of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you, seconded by Councilor Fergier, further discussion?
So, should there be a provision in there to, to, to indicate that we're going to work toward having a, a specialized town of Bridgewater bulk pickup day?
So I think because this is, this is the bylaw, so we have to do the bylaw the way the bylaw's structured. And however we want to do, um, if we can do that through, yes, we can do it through a discussion session, we can get some community input, some input from organizations acting that way and others. Um, but I don't think it's part of the bylaws as a structure. Okay, we have a mover and seconder, any further discussion? Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. And we'll make sure that that is added to a future discussion session, we'll forget about it. Uh, next item is the proposed, uh, I don't know why I always click refresh just as I'm starting to talk, the proposed attendance management policy. Um, so we've talked about this.
Quite a bit, yeah.
Quite a bit before, yep.
Do you need a, does council, is, you're familiar enough with the document? Been here enough times?
Yeah, I am, but I do have a question.
Sure.
What's your question?
If I read it, the, 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 this document correctly, there are some staff that don't show up and don't phone in. They just don't show up.
Um, what this policy is saying is that that's not an ex, this, this, it's not an acceptable thing to do. It doesn't mean it's happening now. So it's just, it's, it's laying out that unapproved, unapproved absences are those where you don't show up for work, you don't call in, you're, you're not sick, those types of things, it lists all those there. Doesn't mean that that's happening today, but what it does is it ensures that the employees are, well, it should be obvious, but the employees are aware of what would be an unapproved absence and therefore considered an instance under this policy where we would, after three cases of that, we would be having a conversation about um what's going on. Um, the employees are aware of it and the, and the managers are approaching it from a con, a consistent and fair way too. So they're all treating it the same.
I, I like your answer, but I don't like that one part of it.
That what has to happen three times?
Yeah.
It's like, yeah.
In the world I was brought up in, if you did it once, you were, you were warned, if you did it again, you were unemployed.
Sometimes uh, what this policy does is it will invoke that conversation, which I would say doesn't have to wait for three instances. If you don't show up for work and you don't call in, there's going to be a question asked about why. Um, but what this does is it kind of, it kind of recognizes that sometimes there's reasons that aren't clearly communicated either. So it could be a circumstance at home that prevented that call from happening, like an emergency where it works the last thing on your mind, that type of thing. Yeah, and, and so those, that conversation wouldn't wait for three instances before that happened.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Good question. Councilor McDonald?
When we discussed it before, I mentioned that um using more terminology to refer to kind of mental health as well.
Yeah.
Were we able to integrate that into?
That would be in our personnel policy where we talk about what's considered to be a sick day or, you know, that, that type of thing. Yeah, where mental health is definitely recognized as a reason to be absent from work.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Graves?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the revised title as presented in document as policy for the town.
Oh, can you, can you refresh the screen, sorry?
Sorry, I'm, I'm on the other.
No, you, we just, it was just changed.
Surprise.
I'm not on these screens.
Oh, okay.
Here.
You, read it, Ken.
I don't know if I refreshed.
Has someone refreshed the browser?
Mark can on it.
I think I've got it. Uh, the town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the proposed attendance management policy as presented in document, document nineteen dash zero-nine-five-A effective immediately?
Perfect.
Is that the right one? Okay.
Tanner, any further questions?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Uh, next item is audited financial statements uh for March thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
This is uh essentially, the audited financial statements that council approved were to have a note within the statements with respects to councillor and CAO expenses. And while we report that in many different venues, uh, it was not included in the audited financial statement, so they had to be revised to note that, and the province was requesting that revision. So what you have before you are revised audited financial statements that have that note contained within it. And uh, we would like council to approve the revised audited financial statements for the town of Bridgewater.
Councilor Darborn?
I move that town council of the town of Bridgewater approve the revised audit financial statements for the town of Bridgewater. And the town of Bridgewater trust fund for the year ended March the thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen is presented in document nineteen dash one-thirty-one.
Thank you, seconded by Councilor Fergier, any discussion?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed?
Don't mess around on that one.
All right. One more item.
One more.
Uh, uh, Public Service Commission temporary borrowing resolution guarantee, uh, these come up various times throughout the year. Um, are there any questions? It's quite routine for us. Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Darborn?
I'll do it. Uh, I move that where is the Public Service Commission of Bridgewater is a body corporate pursuant to visit of chapter fifty-nine of the Statutes of Northern Scotia, nineteen ninety-three. And whereas the said Public Service Commission of Bridgewater has resolved to borrow by the issue and sale of debentures the sum of one hundred and three thousand dollars for the purpose of water systems. And whereas the said Public Service Commission of Bridgewater has requested the town of Bridgewater to guarantee the principal and interest of the said debentures when sole pursuant to section eighty-nine of the Municipal Government Act, be it therefore resolved that, subject to approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs, Affairs, the town of Bridgewater do guarantee the principal and interest of, of debentures of the Public Service Commission of Bridgewater in an amount not exceeding one hundred and three thousand dollars when issued and sold, and that the mayor and the clerk are authorized to do all things and execute all document necessary to give effect to this resolution.
Thank you, seconded by Councilor Fergier. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Councilor McGinnis?
You're about to call for a German, aren't you?
I was, I was going to see if anybody had anything else.
Well, I, I, I think you should remind the general population that we have a general election next Monday.
Oh, yes.
It's important for people to get out to vote.
Yep.
Uh, and uh, you know, it's a, it's a privilege not given to a lot of people around the world, so uh, it's an important day for our country. So I would encourage everyone to get out and do their, what I call our civic duty and vote.
Absolutely. It's, it's something we should not be taking for granted. Uh, I'm just going to keep talking about this conference over and over again just because there's so much. I, uh, the mayor of Istanbul, Turkey was there. He was duly elected democratically in March, and the president of Turkey did not like that. So he said, "The election doesn't count." Installed his own mayoral candidate, did the whole election again, and the original person won by even more votes. Um, and we are in Turkey, and so we are very fortunate that that, that doesn't happen. Doesn't matter what your party affiliation is or who you agree with or who you don't. Uh, we are privileged to have um the freedom fought by others to, to vote. So I hope everyone will be voting um next Monday. It is unbelievably important. If there is nothing else?
Move to adjourn, so move.
Councilor Darborn, seconded by Councilor McGinnis, we are adjourned. Oh yes, we have an in-camera meeting next door.